... Please join me in that.
... And to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And yes, we are excited because you're here tonight. Before we get started, I'd like to take a moment to remember and thank our veterans, today being Veterans Day and a special holiday to a lot of people and the great service that they provide. With that, can we get an approval of the agenda?
Mr. President, I move we approve the agenda of the following amendments. Number one, add classified personnel actions for consideration, item number E. Three, number two, remove policy ING, animals and plants in the school under number E four E from the original consent agenda and add as item number G one, under unfinished business.
Any questions or discussion? All those favorite, please raise your hand. Oppose? Thank you. Rick, looks like we've got some recognition issues.
Yes, I believe we're going to begin by recognizing Tracy Likers as the Associate Principal at Garden City High School for being selected the Area Six Assistant Principal of the Year nominee. Is Mr. Brown is here?
No, he's not accounted.
Okay. I think I'm gonna do it, right? Well, before you, you have Tracy Likers, Assistant Principal at Garden City High School. As a matter of fact, she is the lead principal, Associate Principal there this year. And she was selected as the Principal of the Year for this particular region in southwest Kansas. And it's quite an honor to be recognized for your leadership. And I know from working with Tracy and the Bond Project, as a matter of fact, Tracy took on the lead with her and Kathleen Whitley in reference to purchasing the furniture for the high school and equipment, and that was kind of a daunting task. And she and Kathleen both did a wonderful job. As I've watched Tracy through the years, she's really grown as an administrator. We're very lucky to have her, and I would like to congratulate her on this wonderful honor. A much well-deserved. We had our last board meeting, and this report is going to be done by Jane Barker at Elementary Are you in charge of that area? School. So Skylar, who's here this evening as Principal?
It's me.
I think she's got a little bit of help with it.
Come on up, Jane.
We always just do what she tells us to.
We're very fortunate to have Jane Vanderhoff with us at Garden City High School.
Would you like it to stand?
Yes. We're very excited to be here tonight.
She is, has been selected as the Southwest Kansas Music Educator Association High School
We'd like to tell you about how we changed our math and literacy night.
Music Teacher of the Year for this year.
And so I'd like for everyone to introduce themselves first, and then we'll kind of
So out of, I think, out of all of our wonderful teachers that we've got in the School of Arts
tell you how we went about changing our math and literacy night.
and Communications and Garden City High School, you know, Jane is one that has shown a lot
I'm Skylar Lake, I'm the principal.
I'm Tara Bolden. I teach library and art.
of dedication to her craft, and I think it's well deserved that she's been recognized
Michaela White, second grade.
I'm Debbie Adler. I teach third and fourth grade reading.
by her peers.
Gil Jackson, first grade.
I've been in the district 25 years and teaching this is 36.
Jennifer Taylor, fifth and sixth grade math and social studies.
Roblin Ryan, I'm the math coach.
I'm Deanna Holman, and I teach kindergarten.
I'm Jessie Ryan, and I teach fifth and sixth grade communications.
Okay.
Wow.
Earlier in the year, Dr. Grob from the State Department came out and talked to us about family engagement. It's another aspect of MTSS and really how we could get parents engaged in what their kids are doing at school. And after listening to her presentation, I got really excited, and I thought, you know what? We can do this. We're just gonna do this. We'd already set our math and literacy night for October, and this is first of September. But as you can see, I have lots of dedicated staff members, and once I presented the idea, they jumped on it, and we had several just really working hard nights that we put it all together, and everybody took a job, and we got it all together. And I want them to, since they're the ones that did it, I want them to kind of explain what we did.
Okay. So I have the folder that we did. We spent, after school, we spent time putting together a folder. Each student got one of these for each student. So some parents had multiple students, so they would have multiple folders. And all the folders had the same thing. So we used our testing data to create graphs, and we had one for reading and one for math. And if you hold this, please. We have numbers at the bottom for each student and how they tested according to our data, and the numbers were random. So the kids, the parents got to see how their child compared to the rest of the class. And so this was really impactful for the parents. And then the math was on the back. And since I teach communications, I'll explain the literacy. We use the testing data also to give the students like passages, running record, passages for them to read to practice fluency for 11 weeks, and they're based on their level. So each student will have a different level, and there's two packets of the same, the same stories. So the student would read off of one, and the parent would have another one, and they would do a running record. At the bottom, it explains to the parents how to do a running record. And they would do this for four times in one week, and it's only one minute. So the parents really appreciated that it was only one minute for four times a week. And they would do it with a different colored pencil each night. And after they got that, the student had a graph that looked like this. This is the math, but the reading looks very similar. And they put a date down here, and they would take their colored pencil, and they would make a bar graph and color in how they did. So then they get to see their progress as they go. On this graph, there's also a place for the student and the parent to talk about goals. So they wanted to set a goal based on the graph that they saw, and they set a realistic goal for where they might want to be at the next parent night. So we also included timers and crayons. And Rob is gonna explain that.
Everything that they needed was in this folder, like Ms. Ryan just explained, a one-minute timer for the one-minute reading test. And we wanted to make it as consistent as possible. So in reading, first through sixth grade, did a running record. And then in kindergarten, it was a one-minute test for letter identification. And then after conferences, you send out some letter sound identification. So we were able to differentiate it. And then in math, for first through sixth grade, we gave them a one minute, sorry, one test a week, and it took eight, it takes eight minutes, and it tested the appropriate computation for each grade level. In kindergarten, we did a one-minute each-night test for the number identification, and there were, again, we differentiated it for some students who needed just a focus on numbers one through 10, and some students needed a focus on one through 20. So we were able just to say, we explained, I guess, during the night to the parents, this is how we do it. And then the parents actually practiced before they went home and were expected to just try it with their students. So it was a very explicit time that we could instruct parents and say, here's something to empower you to help your student achieve, your child achieve. And did you want to explain any more about the graph?
Oh, no, I just brought a graph, and it just showed the class average. And so if the child was a little bit low, it really was an awakening call for the parent. Oh, my gosh, my kid's, you know, way down here, and everybody else is up here. And then I think the thing that really was nice is the feedback that we got from the parent is, now I know what to do with my child. You know, they want to help, but they don't know how to help sometimes. And so this was a time we could actually educate the kids and the parents. And I think some of the feedback we got back is, this is so easy. It only takes one minute. That was the big thing, one minute. Because our lives are so complicated. When they get done, these kids have got so many things going on, and yet, one minute can make a huge amount of difference when it comes to the aims testing and the fluency data.
Mrs. Bolden?
Yeah, non-classroom teachers, we had a job also. We designed some activities and games for the kids to do during that time so that the parents and the teachers could meet without distractions. And I do want to put a plug in for Garden City Community Junior College. We have a parent who works there, who teaches there, and she got some volunteers to come and run those activities, and they were awesome. So we know next time who we're gonna call. We're gonna call the baseball team when we need somebody to work with the kids, because they were great.
That's great. It's good for them, too.
Oh, yeah. I think, I think they really enjoyed it, yeah.
At conferences, we got a lot of positive feedback from the parents. And the ones who couldn't make it, we're so excited to go home and start working with their kids.
Kids would really like it, too. I had a little girl the other day that got a fact really fast, and I said, how did you get that? And she said, I've been doing those packets at home that you gave my mom.
We were a little disappointed in our turnout. So at conference time, we did a survey to find out if there was a night that was better or a time, and we found out that we were starting too early. Most of our parents' later time was preferable for them. So in January, when we meet again, we'll move our time back later so that we can hopefully get more parents there. Now that they know what we're doing, I think that will help when they come to our next meeting, but we're really excited.
We truly believe that there are parents who want to help but just really don't know how to help and don't, don't have the tools. And I think this was an excellent way to put those into their hands, and so they, they felt really good about knowing what to do and, you know, how they could help their kids achieve. Questions?
I think it's pretty cool. And I think back when my kids were out there, and just that, that one minute, I liked that idea, too. You know? But any excuse to get, sit down with the child, I think, as a parent, and particularly what's doable, that's a great opportunity, a great facilitator. I can see how that would be met positively by the teachers out there, and the, and the kids, and the parents. So that's commendable. That's pretty exciting.
We're really glad that you went to that, to the parent piece and brought that in to your, to your school. As soon as we go through the consent agenda, we're gonna hear a kindergarten update, and you're gonna hear, please stay, because they're gonna talk about how they're utilizing a new rubric and to get the kindergarten students first and second grade ready. And a parent, the parent piece is a very important part of what they're gonna tell us is happening with their project and their pilot program. So I commend this district for knowing that we need to hit that area more and bring our parents more as active participants in the students' educational careers. And I think it's great because we're hearing it kindergarten, intermediate, elementary, we're hearing it all the way up. We just sat in a, Laura and I went to an intermediate center faculty meeting, and the entire teacher's group decided as a whole that they wanted the students to leave the parent-teacher conference. And they were amazed at how it, it brought the parent in closer to that network. So we're hearing it there. We're gonna hear about college and career readiness that also has, parents need to get involved there, too. So I think this district is doing a great job at bringing, doing what's best for the students, starting with the parents. So thank you for supporting that.
I was just really impressed that you individualized it for each of the students and their parents, because I think it, it really makes a difference to parents to understand how their child is doing in their class. And I think that was really a key benefit to this, the way that you did it. That was a great job. I'm sure that was very difficult to, to do for, for the school, but I think that was well worth it. Thank you very much.
If you Google, it was academic parent-teacher teams, and we got them modeled from that, those models that they were using. So really excited. We can't wait till our January meeting, and we'll update our graphs again. And then as the children progress, we'll put in new group passages for them or new math pieces for them as well. So we're excited.
Well, and you mentioned this there, too, as well, calling on me during the meeting. Thank you for that. But I'm actually even bringing that a little bit into my part of the presentation that we're gonna be presenting to KASB, because we're talking about how this is good for teachers. And this is a really good example that I think flows along with one of our slides that I'm gonna be presenting on, that I'm gonna be using this as an example. So, but one of these days, somebody's gonna have to teach me to mark my reading tests faster. But that's a good problem to have.
Thank you very much.
I was just really impressed that you individualized it for each of the students and their parents, because I think it, it really makes a difference to parents to understand how their child is doing in their class. And I think that was really a key benefit to this, the way that you did it. That was a great job. I'm sure that was very difficult to, to do for, for the school, but I think that was well worth it. Thank you very much.
If you Google, it was academic parent-teacher teams, and we got them modeled from that, those models that they were using. So really excited. We can't wait till our January meeting, and we'll update our graphs again. And then as the children progress, we'll put in new group passages for them or new math pieces for them as well. So we're excited.
Well, and you mentioned this there, too, as well, calling on me during the meeting. Thank you for that. But I'm actually even bringing that a little bit into my part of the presentation that we're gonna be presenting to KASB, because we're talking about how this is good for teachers. And this is a really good example that I think flows along with one of our slides that I'm gonna be presenting on, that I'm gonna be using this as an example. So, but one of these days, somebody's gonna have to teach me to mark my reading tests faster. But that's a good problem to have.
Thank you very much.
Thank you guys. I appreciate all your efforts.
Mr. President, I move that we accept the consent agenda.
Any questions or discussion of the consent agenda? All those favorites, please raise your hand. Oppose? Thank you. I am unaware of any correspondence or tonight. We're gonna move to the curriculum report.
We would like to thank you for allowing us to pilot this first-grade readiness project. We're very excited about it. I have some kindergarten teachers with me this evening that are going to go through their slides and talk to you about the parent involvement component and some of the things they've done since last spring to let parents know what they're doing. So I have Susan Boyle from Edith Charman, Brandy Nad from Abe Hubert, Sue Dennis from Buffalo Jones. And they're going to call on other members of the audience.
But before they get started here, I might want to interject at this time that Dr. Dennis is not with us this evening. I know he sends his regrets, but the truth struck him, and he hardly ever misses work. But today, it got him. He was unable to attend today, and I think probably Sue can testify to that.
Okay, in the beginning, kind of where we started with this was, we did a kindergarten screening in all of the elementary buildings and may of last school year. And what this kind of entailed was the parents would bring their students in that were future kindergartners, and we would do assessments on them. Like we did a PPVT, which helped us assess their vocabulary. And if they were limited or no English speaking, we did an IPT. And then we did basic math skills and reading skills. So like letters and sounds, we identified, they had to identify, they had to identify numbers. And then after that, they would conference with the teacher, and then at that point, we would show them how their, how their child did. And then on all of the brochures that you see and the flip charts, those, you have all of those. At that time, when we conference with the parents, we kind of showed them all of that, explained what, what their child will need to know by the end of kindergarten and how they could help their child over the summer to prepare for kindergarten. And then also, the, the participation was so positive. I know I was one of the teachers that did the conference part of it. And over and over, they just kept telling me that they were so thankful that we were doing it, and they were excited that they could help their child over the summer to get them ready. For a lot of them, it was really informational, because they didn't realize how rigorous kindergarten is now and how much they learn in kindergarten. And so a lot of them was like, oh, I have a lot to do this summer, you know, to get my child ready for kindergarten. So that was really neat to see that, too. One thing that I really liked about all the information that we got, all the data, was because as a kindergarten teacher, the previous year, I had to kind of wait until I did all my aims web testing in September, and then I would look at it and analyze it, and then I would do all my groupings. Well, this year, I had all of that stuff right away at the beginning of the school year. So I was able to get all my groupings done immediately, and I think that's allowed for more rigor in my classroom. And I feel like I can already tell that my scores are higher, because I was able to jump right in in August and get started instead of waiting for the testing data to come in. So that was really exciting for me, too. And I know all of us teachers are probably feeling that same way of just being able to jump in and get started. So that's been really exciting. So one more thing on the data, we, we want to compare the data from last school year to this school year. However, we still have to wait until the school year is completed, and then I'm sure you'll hear an update after that also. And then back to what I was saying earlier with the rigor is, it's exciting, because we had all of this information in August. So we were able to form intervention groups right away. In the past, I know they just used PPVT, and they kind of decided what interventions to do, but this, this way, we had more information on each kid so that they could form intervention groups. And kids are already moving in and out of interventions, because they're, they're scoring so well, and that's really exciting. And like I said, we're just able to challenge the students more and also just to meet the needs of each individual student from all the information we gained on screenings. And one more thing I forgot to mention that I wanted to say is, also with those flip charts and brochures, I've heard from lots of kindergarten teachers that we've been bringing them to the parents frequently, like through parent-teacher conferences, we brought them up. Open house, I brought them up. And so we're able to keep bringing those back so that they understand what their child will need to know, so that if they don't follow that score aim line for the rubric, that the district will retain their child. And so I think we're really working together, and that's a good communication piece that we're constantly using.
The parent involvement piece has been really fun to see different schools, and you can see that Jenny Barker, different schools have kind of embraced that in their own way. And we get together about when some of us, of us that we can, and we share how we're doing it, and we're getting separated ideas from each other. So different types of communication. Newsletters are great, and they tell exactly what we'll be covering that month. Weekly calendars, and just a moment, these ladies will share about that, monthly calendars. And then open house and kindergarten parent meetings. We all have a fabulous parent meeting just for kindergarten students, and they had a really great turnout, about 50% of the parents came, which is a great turnout. And they just talked to them about challenges in kindergarten and what their students will need to learn, and all the growth that their child will make. And so that was a really successful night. School-wide literacy and math nights, those are coming up. And already, we were looking at each other thinking, oh, gosh, we're gonna try what Jenny Barker tried, and ours at Buffalo Jones is tomorrow night. So I think we're trying something different this year, too. And our focus was giving parents more information. And that'll be a fun one for us tomorrow night. And then some, sometimes the best way to really communicate with a parent is one-on-one with notes and emails, phone calls, and then face-to-face conversations. And the lit coach at Georgia Mathews, in particular, mentioned that their kindergarten team does a great job of sending home notes or stalking a parent right there. And they have a really good communication system built up that way. And then you see all the brochures that we passed out earlier, but even at conferences at different times, we're always giving parents different resources to use at home. And a lot of encouragement for them at home. So this is an example of, you wanna talk about it, since this is your school?
Sure. Since my building, like all buildings, is trying to up on the parent communication, is every month, the teachers send our secretary the information that our classes do need at a grade level. And then she makes the newsletter, and then we send it home on our Thursday mail day. And I think it's really neat, and I've heard good feedback. I noticed at conferences, for the first time, parents were like, oh, my kids are learning this sight word, and even writing them and putting them in sentences. And I had never heard parents telling me, oh, we're doing this letter and this word. I'm like, I'm just so glad you know it and you're doing it. So it was really cool. So I think it's really been a great piece.
I'm at Buffalo Jones, I'm Emily Disney, and this is my first year in kindergarten. I've done second grade, and then I went down to kindergarten this year. So I took some things from second grade down to kindergarten, because I want those kids to be prepared for, for second grade whenever they get to that. And one of the things that I did in second grade was I did this homework sheet, and I kind of made it, adapted it to kindergarten. I type in what my kids are gonna do for homework each week, and I send it home with them on Mondays, and I send all the supplies they need home. Down here at the bottom, a lot of times, I'll put comments of what I want the parents to work with them on. Like, my kids weren't able to tie shoes, so I put, please help your kids tie their shoes. And it was so fun that a whole week that I had it there, the kids were like, teacher, I'm dressing, tie my shoes, I can tie my shoes. So, you know, it's a great communication piece. And parents will write comments to me about what's going on at home and how the kids are doing on their homework. I don't have, after, because they have to sign it every night, and they'll write, they worked really hard on writing their letters, or they worked really hard at writing their name. And so it's very nice to get that communication from the parents. And then down here, we put those sight words in the letters so that they know what words we're working on, what letters that we're working on. And we use that as kind of a checklist to see what words they do know, and we'll make little notes on it, because we keep these at, I collect mine on Mondays, and I keep them all in their files so that I have a record that I've communicated this with you. So that's what the three of us teachers do at Buffalo Jones.
And I do want to add, if you take a look, we also, we're focusing on all areas. We're focusing on math, communication, reading, and even behavior. And it's really fun, because I actually have parents, oh, I didn't get to sign my, my child's paper, I hope that's okay, because they know how important it is. And it's really nice to see that connection between parents. And it also gives accountability, responsibility for the parents, the child, and that interconnection with the teacher. So we're all on the same page, and they're not gonna say, oh, well, I didn't know they were learning this letter. It's all right there for them to be seen, and it's a weekly thing. So very positive feedback, too.
Something that we do to differentiate, too, is we even go through and highlight what segments on a weekly test we notice we can't be struggling with, so they can pinpoint, oh, I don't have much time, but I know I need to hit the word that. So that really helps. And we've had some interesting comments from the parents, even just like, would you send the pencil home, please? So some things that maybe parents maybe wouldn't have asked us in after-school pickup time, we're getting that information on these homework sheets. So it's been, it's been awful. I think this is Georgia Mathews, but also Alter Brown uses a monthly calendar, kind of let parents know what they're doing and what they'll be learning that, that month. So that's really important. And I know some teachers use this as their bucket accountability piece, too. Bucket's this wonderful program through, I have a few weeks, so many minutes, and I, for so many nights, and you earn a little personal candy, so I think some billionaires have been using this for their accountability piece for that, so.
Since this is a new program, something we felt like we needed to do as a group of kindergarten teachers is support and help each other. So we've been trying to meet once a month, every third Thursday. And it's, it's just collaboration. We share ways that we are communicating with parents, which ones we found positive. And, and we can kind of get ideas from each other. And we also bring examples of centers and things that we use for instruction. There was a lot of new kindergarten teachers, and we felt like we needed to support and help them, too.
Even just to the teachers.
Yes, even to the teachers. And if you have any questions, we'll try our best to answer them.
For us to be, well, for me, when this was brought up and presented to us, my biggest problem I was going to have with it is as long as there is good communication with parents along the whole way, and it sounds like you guys just knocked it out of the ballpark. So I commend you on that. And not only that, but you also had communication with the students and the parents as well for that relationship, but also amongst yourselves at different schools. So you guys should be a part of that. It's awesome. And my second part is that, the second part is, have you had any negative comments from any parents along the way as far as the retention aspect of it?
No, I haven't yet.
Not yet.
And there wasn't one parent, I don't mean to put you on the spot, wasn't one parent that seemed like they were surprised?
We haven't gotten to that point, though, have we yet?
I haven't gotten to that point. But I know that my fall comments were, there were a couple students that pulled the rubric back out, and they showed the parents and say, we have lots of time ahead of us. Let's work together to see what we can achieve before February. So I brought that piece out again to the parent.
But they weren't surprised that, I mean, not surprised, they didn't feel like they were behind an eight ball and it's pressure, pressure, pressure?
You know, we always try to approach it with the student's best interest in mind. And I think the parents, they, they respect that and they understand that, that we are trying to help their child. And, you know, we're a team working together to help their child. And we'll just do, we'll just do the best that we can together. And I think if they feel, if they feel that, then they, you know, this, it just helps with, you know, it helps with a difficult decision. And I think as a, as a parent, looking at my own children, if I had a lot of good data as opposed to just a feeling, I would have felt more confident with that decision, too. So I think they're trusting us with that, too, that there's, there's a group. It's data-driven, there's a basis for that.
And I know another thing that we did at Buffalo Jones was when the parents came to do the screening right before summer, we actually gave them things to work on to get ready. And I got a lot of positive feedback, because they were like, oh, now I know what I need to do to get them a little bit ahead of the ballgame. And being my first year of kindergarten, I was pretty amazed with what my kids were bringing in, even though they weren't, they hadn't been in school. So it was, it was a pretty eye-opener for me as a, as a first-time teacher in kindergarten as well.
Well, it's been an eye-opener for me, too, like I said, because from where I was before coming down. But there, I mean, it's real rigorous in kindergarten, a lot more than, you know, my, my brain was, you know, trying to grasp. And I'm just amazed of what these little kindergartners can do. These little five-year-olds coming in, and they know so much. And it's because of the parents, and because they did the kindergarten screening and letting, I wasn't involved in the kindergarten screening. So that was kind of, that was kind of tough for me. But, you know, getting that information, it helped me know where my kids were, were at when they came in and everything. And it helps me as a parent, because my son will be in kindergarten next year. So it's helped me understand where I need to get him to start the, the year next year, so.
And to think a big thing parents had to get over is kindergarten isn't what it was a few years ago. It's much more academic, and I think that's the big hurdle for them this first nine weeks.
You know, just in the past conversations, I think this is really exciting to get on top of that challenge that I think you all in the first-grade teachers faced in trying to get kids first-grade ready and be able to have that good communication with the parents. And this is right off the bat, engaging them and, and working with their child. And then hopefully, you get to that point where maybe there's a child that could benefit from additional time in kindergarten that gets very apparent why, and, and help them, and you evaluate that, that decision. That's great.
They have done a great job. They really set the bar high, so high now that we've got to do something with our first-grade teachers, because those parents are going to be coming to first grade next year expecting the same level of communication. So we do have a, we do have a first-grade committee now working on, what are the first-grade expectations? And they've taken a look really at what the work these ladies have done, and they've said, you know what, we just probably should base what we're doing on what they've done. And so I don't think this work's going to take nearly as much time, because you guys set such a high bar and have such great resources. They're not going to have to work as hard.
Well, and I also think that parents coming into the next year of their child at first grade and second grade, it's going to be so much easier for the child, the student, to make that transition from year to year and know what's expected of them.
We're going to have a much better report card, too. Currently, our report cards don't look very good at the elementary level. But we're matching the report cards to go with what the expectations are that they're talking with parents all year long. So that final report card will, will say the same thing. So, nice job.
I want to press our appreciation for y'all being here. It has been stated that I'm extremely excited about establishing the communication of the rigor and then the steps that will follow as, as our students move through the grade level, as we move into the college and creating the standards and the rigor that that will demand and the thought process. Y'all laying this groundwork is incredible, and I'm really excited about that. Thank you again for being here tonight.
Thank you for supporting us.